Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the June 20th, 2023 meeting of the Chatham Select Board. Please note, this meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly thereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone else is recording the meeting, please notify the Chair, seeing none. Pursuant to Governor Healy's March 29, 2023 signing of the Acts of 2023 extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law, Chapter 38, subsection 20 until March 31, 2025, this meeting of the Chatham Select Board is being conducted in person if you are remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public had adequately accessed the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410, conference ID 203-386-491, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Channel 18, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. First ice action of the evening is to establish quorum. Select Board Member De Castro.
Present.
Select Board Member Davis.
Present.
Select Board Member Dykens.
Present.
Select Board Member Shell.
Present.
And Select Board Member Matters is present. We have a full agenda tonight. We are going to have a set of minutes, followed by public announcements and agenda item request. Then we will get into our drought status update and any discussion before it feels warranted at the time. We have a series of public hearings for Chatham Bars Ave, Bayview Road, Sea Change Lane, and Taylor Pond Road, on also no parking conversation signs for Claflin Landing. Then we will get into public comments on our business agenda, which is the following. Consider requests for sales of town property for Castleberry Fairs and Festivals, Creative Arts Center Festival of the Arts, Supreme Fairs in September. We have a special use permit for Chatham Bars Inn at Sage Harbor. We are going to discuss accepting a donation agreement for 1610 Main Street. We will set the date and time for our special town meeting in September. We will consider amendments to our mobile food vendor regulations. And final action of the night will be Board Committee Commission updates or appointments, sorry. And to note, on item C, I will be turning the meeting over to our Vice Chair, Mike Shell, and I will step away, but I am going to return for items D, E, and F. So with all that being said, we are going to start with the minutes of June 13, 2023. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
They're moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, any omissions, corrections? Dean.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have two on page four. In the third paragraph, which begins, it was noted that three of the board members, I'd like to insert a comma after that and the phrase or the clause, "who so declared", comma. So it was noted that three of the board members, comma, "who so declared", and then the rest of the sentence would continue, and I would delete the period at the end, insert a semicolon, and add the phrase or the clause. Otherwise, there would be no quorum. Otherwise, there would be no quorum. So in... Do you have that, Shana? Okay, thank you. And then on page five, at the very bottom, the last line, Committee for Fine-Tuning, I would like to insert in a parenthesis with reference to Yarmouth, close parenthesis. That's it.
All right. Any additional questions, Mike?
Yeah, and I've consulted with, by email, with Director Halela on this. In the paragraph, on page six, under section B, the third paragraph where it says, "Director Halela said town confirmed with the agency that no changes in management had occurred before the ratings call and therefore had not disclosed her retirement in the fall." That's all accurate. I have no problem with that, but I think as a matter of the way the record looks, it would be helpful to add a sentence which reflects what she said to me in response to my question, which was, I mean, I'll give you language. I'm not wedded to the language, but basically something to the effect that she added that a routine disclosure to the financial advisor would be made in the ordinary course, so that it doesn't look as if something was omitted.
That's fine. Okay. Any additional comments, corrections? Seeing none, okay. Select Board Member De Castro.
Aye.
Select Board Member Davis.
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens.
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell.
Aye.
And I say aye. All those were approved. All right. Public announcements and agenda item request. I will start with the Board. Does anyone from the Board have any? Dean.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Chatham Historical Commission met today, and I was asked by the Chair to make this announcement. We have two openings in the regular member positions because of the decision by one member not to seek reappointment, and she was celebrated for her long-term service today. That's Jane Moffett. And the recent passing and timely passing in midterm of Dr. Benjamin Spolinski. The, this Board is going to make some appointments this evening, and I think hopefully we'll advance the two alternates to fill those positions. And that would mean that we have no alternates on the commission, so I would ask that if there is anyone in the public who is interested in historical preservation, to submit an application online or in person with Shana. It's a very important commission, and the work needs to continue, so anyone who's interested in serving, even just learning the ropes as an alternate, that would be great. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any additional members on the Board? Anyone from the audience in person? Anyone online? Nope. All right. Moving on. Drought status update and discussion. Do we have our DPW Director online?
Yes, I'm here.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Want to give us a brief update on how things have changed in the last week?
Uh, yeah, I'm still, I haven't received an update from the Water Department yet for the pumping schedule, how many hours per day we're pumping, but I'm sure the rain on Saturday helped a little bit, but I don't, I don't have any more details that it's changed substantially from our last meeting.
All right, well, thank you very much. And we're going to keep this on as kind of a rolling agenda item every week just so we can take the action, but as far as this evening goes, does anyone have any questions or comments? Ashreen.
The only comment is, since we don't have sufficient information to go forward, we should wait for our next report.
Yep, and that's why we'll keep it on as a weekly. Okay. All right, no action then. We're going to go into public hearings first. Chatham Bars Ave. I believe we have a notice on that one, if the clerk would be so kind to read it.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The Chatham Select Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, June 20, 2023, at 5:30 PM in the large meeting room at the Town Office Annex 261 George Ryder Road to consider the placement of new traffic signs. No parking, north side of Chatham Bars Ave, May 15 through October 1st, except for Friday night band concerts and other special events where traffic is restricted to one-way. Signs are of standard size and style and recommended to the Board by the Traffic Safety Committee. All interested parties are encouraged to participate, signed, Select Board.
Thank you very much. Who is presenting?
Lieutenant Goddard, Mr. Chair.
All right.
Good evening, Lieutenant Goddard, Chatham Police.
Good evening.
What you just read is pretty much the recommendation that was approved 4-0 on a unanimous vote from the Traffic Safety Committee at their April 27 meeting. The only thing that I would add to that is the caveat here where it says, "except Friday night band concert and other special events where traffic is restricted to one-way", the only way that the one-way restriction would happen is if police presence were there to control that traffic. So the only time that that would be an exemption is when police are there controlling the traffic pattern on that roadway.
All right. I'm going to start with a couple of questions. So with that being said, there would be probably standard signage that would cover all events excluding anything that was done by patrol, correct? Like, so we're going to have to have proper signage saying that these restrictions are in place to enforce it?
Yeah, for no parking.
Correct.
Correct.
And then, you know, and you said these three, the special events, wouldn't have to have, we would not, we'd be required to have that language posted because it's done only by detail?
I don't, in my personal opinion, I don't think we need to post anything special about that. We already have a sign for the Cape Cod parking lot regarding Friday nights, and once we set up our detour for Friday night band concert or any other event, we can inform the people going through that they can park in violation of the signs for that evening based on this exemption. We wouldn't need to post any other signs or any exemptions on the no parking signs themselves to add to any kind of confusion.
Agreed. I agree with that. Leading up to this consideration, was it determined, or do you have a good sense of where these vehicles, who's using these parks? Is it people just coming in for the day, going to the beach, a combination of a bunch of things? What did you find was the main usage of people parking in this area?
On the northern, the end closer to Main Street, there's really not a lot of cars parked there except for band concert. Once you get down a little bit further, down towards Bay Lane and all the way to the end of Shore Road, you have a mix of different vehicles, intended purposes, usage, whatever, however you want to do it. Some people are going across Claflin and using the landing there. Others, I'm assuming, are Chatham Bars Inn employees who are using it for parking to get through Kettle Drum and go to work.
Okay, great. Just wanted to kind of tee that up. So it is a public hearing. I'm going to open it up to the public for any questions or comments before the Board kind of goes into our deliberations. So if there's anyone from the live audience tonight that has a question or comment? Yes, sir.
Charles Baldwin, Levin Nameless Lane in Chatham. Thank you for inviting me. I believe there's, Shana has a couple of pictures that I sent that I'd like to have. So you all have those? Okay. Nameless Lane is just off of Chatham Bars Ave, so I probably know more about the problem on Chatham Bars Ave than anybody else, because I have to deal with it every day, every time I leave my house and every time I come back to my house. The road is not particularly wide. There's no sidewalk. So the people that are Chatham Bars Inn and Hawthorne Inn, they don't drive to town, they walk to town. So there's no sidewalk. Now you've got cars parking on the north side of Chatham Bars Ave, which are now blocking half of a travel lane. So you have two-way traffic and pedestrians, and you've got one and a half traffic lanes. The thing that really bothers me about this is that the town owns the road, and the town owns the land that the cars are parking on. The town owns the golf course. That's where the majority of the cars are parking along the golf course. So the town, as owners of the land, would be able to say, okay, let's widen the road so we could have legal curbside parking. But that's not happening. So if that can't happen, or is not going to happen, then there should be no parking. Because you can't have cars parked blocking a lane on a major road that goes to town. Trucks go up to make deliveries up on Main Street. They park at the bandstand parking area, and they turn around there behind the brick block, and they go back down Chatham Bars Ave, because they don't want to drive through town. Garbage trucks, trailer trucks, box trucks, all of it. In the meantime, there's people in the road, walking, and vehicles trying to go two different ways. My concern is that if this continues, at some point, something terrible is going to happen, and the town could be liable, because the town owns the road and the town owns the land that abuts. And the town is allowing parking in a place where there should be no parking. It's that simple. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Additional members of the audience in house tonight have a question or comment? Anyone online who has a question or comment?
No.
No one? All right, so let's bring it to the Board. Thoughts from the Board? Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I support the recommendation of the Traffic Safety Committee. We've talked about it in our Parking Study Group, and they've talked about it ad nauseam in the Traffic Safety Committee as well. I have heard Mr. Baldwin a number of times. I've seen the pictures. I've seen it in real life. In July and August, the north side of Chatham Bars Ave gets extremely congested, and it is foot traffic combined with truck and vehicular traffic and cars, as Mr. Baldwin described for one and a half lanes. And he also summarized nicely what the town's position is or what it could be. And I know that we have remanded, we've asked for a study by the Cape Cod Commission for the traffic and parking in the downtown area, but I also think that we need to really focus on solutions for Chatham Bars Ave. The fact that we need to widen it and it needs a sidewalk is a no-brainer. If you're going to have that, we have foot traffic coming from Shore Road, from the Chatham Bars Ave and Hawthorne and other rentals, et cetera. There's a tremendous amount of foot traffic coming from Shore Road into town and back. So we're remiss if we don't have sidewalks, just are. So somehow we got, in my mind, we need to find the land to build a sidewalk on the north side of Chatham Bars Ave, or the south side, wherever we have land where we can fit, so that we have a safe way for pedestrians to navigate from Shore Road to downtown and back again, because that's not going to go away. We, in fact, want them, so let's take care of them. So I'm fully supportive of this measure. I think we should do it, you know, as quickly as possible. I think it's better for safety all around, better for the fire department, et cetera, et cetera. So in my mind, it's kind of a no-brainer, so thank you.
All right, thank you. Dean.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I too serve with Jeff on the Parking Solutions Working Group, and I know Mr. Baldwin has regularly attended those meetings and expressed his thoughts, and I very much respect the position of and recommendation of the Traffic Safety Committee. The study to which Mr. Dykens referred, I don't think is underway as yet, but hopefully it will commence soon by the Cape Cod Commission. And ideally, because I heard the Fire Chief tell us, you know, this needs to remain a two-way street for fire protection purposes, ideally, if it could be worked out, that the town could expand the travel lane by allowing for parking on the sides. Mr. Baldwin talked about the golf course, and if the town could put a sidewalk, I think we might have a permanent remedy to this situation. I do caution that I don't, I wasn't involved, I wasn't on this Board when the town acquired the golf course, but if it was acquired for purposes that fall within Amendment Article 97 of the State Constitution, that would require action by the Legislature. I don't know if that's the case or not, and that's not an impossible thing to do, but we were told by the previous DPW Director that the legal layout of the street does not conform to what's on the ground, so that's another complication. But I think this is the longer-term solution that we need to pursue, but in the meantime, I'm going to accept the recommendation of the Traffic Safety Committee to eliminate parking on the north side from May 15 until October 1st, except for these special events and the Friday night band concert, as Lieutenant Goddard outlined. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Is that a motion?
That is a motion, yes.
I'll second it.
Second? Further discussion? Yeah?
Just a question, if I could ask Lieutenant Goddard, what, if any, colloquy there was around the selection of the dates?
I believe the selection of the dates were consistent with some of the other parking restrictions around town. The October, yeah, May 15 to October 1st, that covers the deep summer and the shoulder seasons, and wouldn't have to differentiate for weekend traffic and so forth. And once we get past October 1st, there's really not a parking issue down there.
Okay, thank you.
No, I too am going to accept the recommendation. I mean, I'm always concerned about when we move, when we stop something, where do we shift it over? But this is, and I'll quote, "You stop that measure only to be put in place into the completion of the traffic being, traffic safety study for the Cape Cod Commission being performed and stuff." So this is obviously something we're going to re-review and evaluate, so I'm fairly comfortable with affirmative action on this one. So with that being said, we have a motion, we have a second. Select Board Member De Castro.
Aye.
Select Board Member Davis.
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens.
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell.
Aye.
Select Board Member Matters says aye. That is approved, 5-0. All right. We have another public hearing.
Do we have to close this one?
It's just a discussion I had the other day with our Community Development. See, in the Planning Board days, we ran public hearings a little bit differently. I'm more than happy to close a public hearing.
Move to close.
All right, second.
Second.
All right. All those in favor? Select Board Member De Castro. Select Board Member Davis.
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens.
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell.
Aye.
Select Board Member Matters says aye. That is approved, 5-0. All right. We have another public hearing.
Do we have to close this one?
It's just a discussion I had the other day with our Community Development. See, in the Planning Board days, we ran public hearings a little bit differently. I'm more than happy to close a public hearing.
Move to close.
All right, second.
Second.
All right. All those in favor? Select Board Member De Castro. Select Board Member Davis.
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens.
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell.
Aye.
And I say aye. It's one of the Planning Board procedural days in the back of my mind.
I'm happy to defer to Select Board.
I'll get a couple of legal opinions. Glad I'll get a couple of legal opinions if I, but, no. All right, so we're going to move on to another public hearing, and I do know the clerk will be reading this notice. Please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. The Chatham Select Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, June 20, 2023, at 5:30 PM in the large meeting room at the Town Office Annex 261 George Ryder Road to consider the placement of new traffic signs, new stop signs and stop bars, Bayview Road at the intersection with Mill Creek Road, Sea Change Lane at the intersection with Bayview Road, Taylor Pond Road at the intersection with Cockle Cove Road. No parking between signs and Claflin Landing on either side of the driveway for 216 Shore Road. The signs are of standard size and style and recommended to the Board by the Traffic Safety Committee. All interested parties are encouraged to participate, signed, the Select Board.
Thank you very much. And who is kicking? Welcome back.
Thank you, thank you. Lieutenant Goddard, Chatham Police. Before I get going on this, there is one request.
The signs are of standard size and style and recommended to the board by the Traffic Safety Committee. All interested parties are encouraged to participate. Signed, the Select Board.
Thank you very much. And who is kicking? Welcome back.
Thank you, thank you. Lieutenant Goddard, Chatham Police. Before I get going on this, there is one request that I do have. The second item, which is the request for a new stop sign and stop bar on Sea Change Lane at the intersection with Bayview Road. I've had subsequent discussions with DPW Director Failey. He has some concerns regarding the roadway layout, the distances and the sightlines, as well as the fact that Sea Change is a private lane. So his concerns about the placement of a stop sign there. So what we'd like to ask is that that item be postponed for any action until we've had a chance to review that and look at the layout and so forth.
Anyone have an issue with that?
No.
Nope, all right.
So we'll re-present that at a later date, once we've done that reevaluation.
We'll schedule that when you're comfortable to move forward on it.
Thank you. So the Bayview Road in intersection with Mill Creek Road, right now, there is no traffic control device there. So the recommendation is to put a stop sign and a stop bar on Bayview Road as it intersects with Mill Creek to add in safety. The second is the stop sign and stop bar on Taylor Pond Road at the intersection with Cockle Cove. That particular intersection, as you come up Taylor's Pond approaching Cockle Cove, you're coming from up an incline, which makes it a little more difficult to actually see what's at the top of the hill. And the fear is that people are going to go right across and into the traffic lane of Cockle Cove before they realize there's actually an intersection there. So that recommendation is made based on that as well. Do you want me to go into the no parking on Shore Road or wait?
You can kick it off, and then we can regroup a little bit.
So the discussion here on Claflin Landing is very specific to the driveway for number 216 Shore Road. The driveway comes out onto Claflin Landing. It is a paved driveway. And what the requestor had presented to us was a request for a pair of no parking between these signs, one on either side of the driveway, to protect the access and egress from his driveway. He's had some incidents where people have parked a little too close on both ends. He hasn't been able to make the swing to get in and out of his driveway. So we're not looking for anything, any major change there. Just two signs like we've done on Hallet Lane and some other places in town, just to protect the integrity of this driveway itself. I spoke with Chair Hosmer from the Waterways Advisory Committee because Claflin is a landing at the end. His opinion was, based on how far away it is from the actual landing, he doesn't feel that his committee needs to weigh in on that at all. And also, if they did, he wouldn't have any concerns about these signs.
Great, thank you very much. Since it is a public hearing, I'm going to start with the public. Those in the audience this evening, any questions, comments, or concerns? Yes, yeah, if we just go up to the podium, please?
Hi, my name is Barbara Wilson. I'm Forest Beach Road. I'm here to support the stop signs that the lieutenant has recommended. We, a group of us on Forest Beach, met to discuss the problems of speeding and pedestrian safety on our beach access roads in the area. And these signs are a part of that. We decided that we had to have an organized approach. We need to do something about this. They're long-term problems. The summer just exacerbates the problem. We decided that we had to create a petition to find out if we were the only ones that were concerned about this or if our neighbors were as concerned as we were. In this, we were joined by Cockle Cove residents who have the same similar problems during the summer and during all year. The beach roads are busy with pedestrians and people going to the beach. We created that petition, and we got approximately 443 signatures. These were just winter people. And we then went to the police and asked them if we could have in-person presence on these roads to help this situation. And the third thing we did was go to the Traffic Committee. And we're asking that you support the recommendations for these roads from the Traffic Committee so that we can take care of these problems. We have these visitors that we invite every summer to come to our area. And we need to make sure that the roads they're using to get to the beach are safe for both residents and those beach visitors, those summer visitors. So I'm asking that you support these requests. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any additional audience members? Anyone online?
No.
All right, bring it to the board. Actually, I do want to make one comment. When I saw this first in my packet for the Taylor Pond Road one, I had to laugh a little bit because I grew up in this area. That particular intersection, both with the Taylor Pond going down to the pond, the old landing, there was an actual landing there at one point. And then the slope going down toward the parking lot. As kids, we used to skateboard and everything. And there was talk, when I was much younger, about putting a stop sign there. So luckily, there's been no major accidents in the couple of years that it's been... We've discussed this. But I support it, and it's probably long overdue because I've seen far too many scenarios that could have played out differently. So it is funny to see how this persistence and, you know, a couple of generations maybe to make this actually come true. So those are my thoughts. But Mike?
Yeah, thanks. Sorry, I just want to add. I received a communication from a family that lives on Taylor Pond Road. They echo the comments from the lady who just spoke from the public and probably our signatories on your petition as well. But they wanted me to make it known that, first of all, they're concerned about excessive speed on Cockle Cove Road as the summer months begin. They think the stop sign at Taylor's Pond Road is an absolute must. They also indicate they've been discussing, perhaps with the Traffic Safety Committee or not, I don't know, but the notion of speed bumps possibly. And they note in particular that landscape company trucks are the biggest offenders and speedsters who apparently don't know or don't pay any attention to the speed limit. And so these are all concerns that bring them to a desire to have their support noted here for this meeting.
Thank you. Anyone else have the board? Questions? Jeff?
Mr. Chairman, I move to accept and approve the recommendation to our board by the Traffic Safety Committee to place new stop signs and stop bars at Bayview Road at the intersection with Mill Creek Road, Taylor Pond Road at the intersection with Cockle Cove Road, and no parking between signs on Claflin Landing on either side of the driveway for 216 Shore Road.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Select Board Member Castro?
Aye.
Select Board Member Davis?
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens?
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell?
Aye.
Select Board Member says aye also.
I move to close the public.
Second?
Second.
All right. Select Board Member Castro?
Aye.
Select Board Member Davis?
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens?
No.
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell?
Aye.
And Select Board Member Metter says aye also. All right. Taylor's Pond, Claflin Landing. All right, we are going to get into public comments on our business agenda. Once again, we have a request for sales on town property for various events, special use permit for Chatham Bars Inn at Stage Harbor, the discussion to accept the donation agreement of 1610 Main Street, setting the date and time for a special town meeting, and it can consider amendments to our mobile food vendor regulations. So this is the opportunity for questions or comments from the public on our business agenda. I will start with those in the audience this evening. Does anyone have any questions, comments, or concerns? None. I will ask for the online audience if there's any comments or questions.
We have none.
We have none, okay. First item on our business agenda. Consider requests for sales on town property, Castleberry Fairs and Festivals for July 8th and 9th, August 5th and 6th, at the Community Center Lawn. Questions or comments from the board? It's a relatively straightforward request. Dates are spelled out.
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion.
Please.
I move that the board grant special permits for sale of goods on town property to Castleberry Fairs for and Arts and Crafts... I think it means for and Arts and Crafts Fair on the Community Center Lawn on July 8th and July 9th, and August 5th and August 6th, 2023, to Supreme Fairs for an Arts and Crafts Fair on the Community Center Lawn on September 9th and 10th, 2023, and to the Creative Arts Center for the Festival of the Arts in Chase Park from August 18th to August 20th, 2023.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, further discussion? All those in favor? Select Board Member Castro?
Aye.
Select Board Member Davis?
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens?
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell?
Aye.
Select Board Member Metter says aye. Next, special use permit for Chatham Bars Inn and Stage Harbor.
Thank you. Supreme Fairs.
Thank you. Good evening. Just introduce yourself, please.
Good evening. My name is Bill Holland. I'm the Operations Manager at Chatham Bar's Inn. I run the boating department in our boating fleet at the hotel. Currently, the hotel operates our boating program off our hotel's pier. Whale watching, fishing trips, providing our guests the quintessential Cape Cod experience. This spring, we started to see a change in our harbor. And Chatham Harbor is becoming a, has become a tidal harbor, where there's a bar that goes from Turn Island out to North Beach Island by the North Cut and a bar by Outermost and at the end of the South Cut, making Chatham Harbor a tidal harbor for pretty much 12 hours a day for boats like the hotel's 38 Shelter Island or 34 Regulator, which draw a lot of water. This is affecting the hotel's operation. And there's times where, like example today, where we could not get out of the harbor in the morning. And if we had the access to Stage Harbor, we could go out early, get Stage Harbor, pick up our guests, take them out whale watching, and then return to the hotel's dock. Another part of this with the hotel, obviously, is safety for our guests, safety for our captains and the vessels. Where we go out fishing or on a whale watch, and we may not be able to get in right away. And then by the time we can get into the channel, you know, the tide has gone out, and we don't have a way to get into the harbor. And so by getting the special permit to come around and come into Stage Harbor, we could drop off at Stage Harbor safely for our guests. We are not going to have to worry about any parking issues at Stage Harbor. The hotel has complimentary shuttle service. All the trips are hotel guests that are staying at the hotel. Their cars are parked in the parking lots at the hotel. So the shuttle van would go to the Stage Harbor in front of the Chatham Harbor Master's Office, be able to pick up our guests or drop them off. It would be a quick touch and go that would not affect any of the other vessels that load and offload at that pier. It's not something that we're looking to do on a regular basis, every day, all the time. It's just something that we need as an option when the tides hit a certain time of day or certain safety issues come up. This is something that we have Ted Keung support on, Stuart, the Harbor Master. They were the ones that recommend us to apply for this permit. The hotel has provided Ted with the copies of the captain's licenses, who will be operating the vessels. And the hotel is willing to enlist the town additionally insured on our insurance program. There's not going to be any impact of marine life or land by granting us this special permit. And that's what we're looking for today.
Great, thank you for the introduction. Questions or comments from the board? Shereen?
Hi there, welcome. So the difficulty is the navigation of into where your dock space is. One of the questions that I had, I see that you did the certificate of insurance agreement, that you're going to provide that, and I think that we could probably prove this contingent upon that, correct? We don't have to see it beforehand. Are you utilizing mooring in Stage Harbor?
No, we will not be utilizing moorings in Stage Harbor. We would get out of Chatham Harbor in time before the tide ran out, come around Monemoy Island into Stage Harbor and pick up at the time. If we had a 10 o'clock pickup, the boat would pull up five minutes before, pick up the guests. The shuttle van would pull in at the same time, so there's not going to be any kind of clogging or congestion, parking or blocking the dock or mooring of the vessel. If we need to, if we have an hour to kill in between coming around Monemoy, the vessel doesn't need to come into Stage Harbor. It could do a square outside in Nantucket Sound and not affect any boat traffic or anything like that.
Are you putting together any programs to utilize, like the Stage Harbor inlet area or Monemoy or anything is like places for your guests to go? Or is it simply just the same business model with just this different access?
Exactly. We're going to be continuing our same business model and offerings to our guests heading out east on fishing trips and whale watching. There's not going to be any additional boating inside of Nantucket Sound or Stage Harbor or anything like that.
Just as a matter of interest, what do the boats draw?
It depends. Our 38 Shelter Island, depending where we trim up the motors and obviously sea conditions, you know, if we have a heave coming on in the inlet or you're dealing with fog, et cetera. Anywhere between two and a half and three and a half feet.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Questions, comments from the board? Jeff?
Yeah, thanks, Bill. The explanation was great. I had the same question that Shereen had about in terms of whether you need a mooring in Stage Harbor. You're going to come around when it's time for the trip. You're going to come all the way around Monemoy into Stage Harbor, pick up your folks, and then do your thing. Are they going to come back and disembark there as well, you think, depending on the tides? Or will...
It's going to vary.
If you can get in, you'll disembark at Chatham Bar's Inn.
It's going to vary. Like in today's tide, we would have picked up at Stage Harbor, come back into Chatham Harbor, dropped off, and then picked up and dropped off our next guests inside Chatham Harbor. So obviously, the tides change an hour later each day. And so there's times where, if it's three hours either side of low tide, that is our challenge area, it's 12 hours a day. It depends where that time falls. So every day is going to be different where that time might be in the middle of the day. We're just, at this time, sometimes we're blocking trips, and we're not going to schedule trips during that time. And then there's times where those challenges of getting in and out are in the middle of the night, and it's not going to affect our operation. So it's something that we're not, you know, it might be, I put on the permit, you know, it might be something that we use once a week, you know, a couple of times every 10 days. It's not something that we're looking, that's going to be a daily thing that we're picking up and dropping off and clogging up the ramp or parking or anything like that. It's going to be touch and go. These are professional captains that have worked for me for five, seven, eight years that know what they're doing, and we have a very good operating record with all our captains. So it's something that we'll come into the harbor, drop off or pick up timed with our courtesy shuttle. And it should not affect any of the commercial or Harbor Masters operations or anything like that at the Old Mill. It's called the Old Mill Boatyard Facility, which is right in front of the Harbor's Master's Office.
Well, I think it's really, it's a good idea. It's low impact. You're going to be shelling folks back and forth. I mean, I think it's a point to be made that the town's, you know, prescient investments in the waterfront and Stage Harbor, you know, being used by some of our preferred, you know, businesses in town. So I'm pleased that you're able to use it. I'm pleased that we can add value this way. So I'm certainly going to be in favor of it. The only question I have is about the mooring. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any questions? No? Enter chain of motion?
Motion. I move to approve the special, the town landing special use permit to Chatham Bars Inn for the calendar year of 2023. I think that's all we need, right?
There's a second? Additional questions or comments? All those in favor? Select Board Member Castro?
Aye.
Select Board Member Davis?
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens?
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell?
Aye.
Select Board Member Metter says aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good luck with it. At this moment, I'm going to step out of the room, turn the meeting over to the vice chair for the 1610 donation agreement discussion, and then I will return for item D.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a memo here from the acting town manager to the town manager that basically sets forth the terms of an amendment to the donation agreement previously executed and delivered by the Eastwood Homes Business Trust on behalf of Mr. William Marsh. The amendment terms are... The amendment terms are set forth, I think there's paragraph seven, the language is set out in Katie's memo, and then there are some other technical changes in the agreement, which is basically name changes and the like. Is there anything else that we should add? Jill?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. The only other thing to add is that Bill Marsh, the donor, had reaffirmed his donation in an email to me on May 24th, so he said he's totally good with this, and I wish us all good luck, so we do have that commitment.
Okay, so basically, we have to approve the form of it and execute it, and he's committed to execute this? And I take it this was prepared in consultation with his counsel?
Yes, and with Town Council Costello as well.
Yeah, thank you. Yes, Dean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, this is essentially the same agreement we've accepted in the past. It's consistent with this board's call of a special town meeting recently at the request of the Friends of the Council on Aging, so I will support it. I do note a misspelling in the third line, I don't usually look at misspellings, but Mike, I'll leave that to Mr. Shell, but I was once corrected on this in my youth, and I've never forgotten this. The word supersede is an S instead of a C, it's in the third line, S U P E R S E D E. Thank you.
I think you mentioned that last time, too.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, yes.
I'll make a motion that we approve this.
I'll second.
All right, there's a motion on the table, seconded, but Mr. Dykens has a comment.
I was going to make the motion, that was it.
Oh, okay, so we have a motion, second, any further discussion or questions, comments? Mr. De Castro?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Dykens?
Aye.
And the vice chair says aye. The motion carries, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a note to thank Mr. Marsh again for his support of us.
And I would add my approval and endorsement of that as well, thank you.
You bet.
Thank you for making that brief. All right, setting the date and time for a special town meeting. Since we've just decided to call a special town meeting in the fall, ideally September, we have a series of dates recommended or putting out for discussion. Thoughts from the board? Shereen?
Well, I, seeing that Labor Day is a legal holiday for the town, and Yom Kippur is a religious holiday for some, I would say that our only considerations are September 11th and 18th. And I'm, I'm, I'm okay with either one, but I think I'm leaning more towards the 18th, and I think it's more about getting into the groove of post-summer, you know, after Labor Day, and, you know, just for that reason, rather than...
Mike?
Yeah, I would add, I agree with that, my understanding is that it takes a week or two, perhaps even, for people to get into the routine of school and so forth, and so I think the 18th is better. I think there's an unfortunate, there would be an unfortunate association with September 11th. I think that's a date that, you know, probably ought to stand on its own, absent some compelling reason to do it that day.
Dean?
Much as I'd like to have this resolved sooner rather than later. I'm okay with September 18th, and I agree with what Mr. Shell just said, there's something about September 11th that, you know, we take very seriously, we always have a ceremony at the fire department in the morning, and, you know, it's a day that is engraved in everybody's memory, so I'm okay with the 18th.
I'm okay with the 18th, I mean, I'm just going to be very blunt, there's going to be no ideal time and day. That, we all know that, we can argue different scenarios, so I think, you know, recognizing certain dates are not ideal. By default, the 18th is fine, and we will hold the meeting and, you know, hope that there's a good turnout, and we can discuss this matter appropriately, so I have no issue with the 18th. Mike?
I would just point out, the last time we set a date for the annual meeting, we forgot to set the time, we probably ought to do it this time. I would, it's probably a coin flip, and I'll defer to any better input, but my instinct would be that we do it at 6 o'clock. I don't think it's going to be a long meeting, and that gives people an opportunity to finish whatever they're doing in the afternoon, but subject to better input, that would be my suggestion.
6:30.
Again, there's no, there's no perfect formula for it, if you go one way, you're going to default to other people. If you go earlier, you're going to impact other people, between work schedules, businesses, restaurant workers, retail workers, kids, school, everything, there's no perfect, so it's just, you just set a date and time.
I'm with the 6 o'clock, I think it just splits it down the middle a little, as you said.
I am too, I guess.
All right, I think we're enthusiastically going with 6 o'clock.
Yeah, I just, it seems, just in, you know, 6:30, I don't know, 7? 7 maybe gets too late, I don't know.
And I, you know, if you do it at 6 and optimistically it's over in 75 minutes, people can still get home and have dinner afterwards, I mean, you know.
Should take no more than 10 minutes, everybody knows which way they're going to vote on this, one way or the other. Hopefully, it's not a one vote difference either way, and we have a resolution of this. But I'm okay with 6 o'clock.
Okay, so with all this being said...
We have the special town meeting on September the 18th at 6 o'clock PM, do we need to set the place, Jill?
Please, yeah.
So that would be at the Montemoy Middle School?
At the Montemoy Middle School, that's the motion. All right, second?
Second.
Second, further discussion? All those in favor, Select Board Member De Castro?
Aye.
Select Board Member Davis?
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens?
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell?
Aye.
Select Board Member Metter says aye.
I would, I would just like to point out, per Ms. Kristen Berry's memo that's attached, that means that August 28th is not a date that can be used for the, for the planning board recommend, public hearing on the zoning change. It's got to be either the 24th or the 14th.
Yes, Mr. Chair, we'll try to get that done as soon as possible.
All right, next item on our agenda, consider amendment to the mobile food vending regulations. Shauna, please?
Sure, so as the board is aware, you last year approved a pilot program for food truck regulations in town. At the time, we were under contract with a vendor for concessions at Harding's Beach, so we did not include Harding's Beach as an option for 11 o'clock. There was also discussion to begin vending at 11 a.m. There was also discussion of allowing the activity to start at Oyster Pond at 11 a.m. So we have, really, the only amendments to the regulations are to Attachment 1, which lays out the locations that are approved, the time of day that the, that vending is allowed, and any restrictions for the place. We did suggest sales of ice cream and frozen desserts to be prohibited by the food trucks that are permitted at Oyster Pond and Harding's Beach, so it's not to conflict with the roaming ice cream vendor that we still contract with. One suggestion from Amy Howell, the new Recreation and Beaches Director, was that from her experience in another town, that any beach where the vending is allowed, any advertisement that the food truck does includes that a parking sticker or a fee for entering that lot is required, so that no one says, well, I'm just going in the truck and then parks for the day. But really, that's it, this, I had intended to go to Park and Recreation with these changes last week. Unfortunately, they did not have a quorum, so this is scheduled for next Monday evening to go before Park and Rec. So I would just ask if you wanted to consider these tonight to condition approval of any changes on approval by Park and Rec.
Great, thank you very much, questions or comments from the board, Shereen?
Yeah, I noted, and I'm noting that there are some emails in here from some of the, oh, let me just start, that I'm fine with those changes, I think they make, the recommendations make sense. One thing that I would like to talk about, though, is, you know, the dynamics around the town parking lot and the, the issues that some of the budding businesses had, is noting that there were times when the mobile vendors didn't show up, et cetera, et cetera. So I was wondering if we could add into this a, for, specific for Chatham, for the town parking lot, a no-show clause, that there could, that in the event that the mobile vendor is not going to be there that day, that we have a system put in place that would include a phone call to the proper department to say, we're not going to be there, and that would result in the removal of the cones that were associated with that, freeing up the parking space for, for the day. I think that it would be a courtesy to the budding businesses to know that we are on top of that and noting when that occurs, and maybe, maybe we do, at that same time, we'd be able to record how many times the, there was utilization in that site, to review it at a later date.
Okay, Dean?
I think Shereen's suggestion is an excellent one, I just wanted to ask, in addition to the concern about no-shows, we did have a picture or two of multiple spaces being used, how do we, how do we police that?
With the particular vendor that was pictured, that is trailered, so the spaces that it used up had to accommodate the parking by a truck. I will say that we have not had any inquiries for this year. I don't know how successful the vendors were in the town lot to know that if, they would even want to go back to that. It's not a high visibility spot, and difficulties with coming and going and getting in and out. So, haven't had any inquiries yet, but certainly we'll discuss language for a no-show clause with Town Council.
Okay, so the only changes you're proposing are in the application, having to do with times. And I just wanted to ask, the determination not to RFP Harding's Beach, I was wondering why that had occurred, was that designed so that we could have multiple opportunities for different vendors?
Yes, there, and also the contract that was put out for RFP two years ago, it was a two-year contract, they were not able to, to fulfill it.
Okay.
They weren't able to staff or have a permanent unit down there.
Okay, well, I would move approval of the recommendation of our executive secretary with the additional languages proposed by Member Davis, and subject to the condition that the Park and Recreation Commission approve the changes as well.
I'll second that, but I have one more question. It just relates to, you know, the idea of outdoor dining and things like that, and I can't recall where we were at with this, and it's just moving forward, the idea of having more diverse menus around town, is food carts, do we have regulations around food carts right now?
I believe they are covered in the definitions from these regulations.
Okay, I, sorry if I didn't see it.
Lunchwagon or any other mobile food vehicle in a fixed location, so coffee truck or cart, canteen truck or cart, catering.
And that, those are allowable?
Under these regulations, in specific locations?
In specific locations.
Also, these regulations allow a mobile food vendor, under the definitions, which could include like a hot dog cart or something like that, to operate at their fixed base of operation located in town, so...
Okay, okay, I just think it would really be neat to have like a raw bar shucking somewhere down, on a food cart.
I guess I'm a little confused on this one, I don't know whether the carts are subject to this, these rules and regs, or not subject to these rules and regs?
Carts are.
Okay.
For the permitted spots.
That we list.
That we've listed here, however, if someone, say, Chatham Perk, had a hot dog cart, they could operate that on their property because that's part of their fixed base of operation.
Chatham Bars?
Downtown.
Yeah, downtown, okay, I'm still confused, okay.
So...
It has to be one of the physical location that we've identified.
Does it have to fit the definition of the business to have a food cart, or could another, like a private property have a food cart?
No, that'd be a change, so if it was like, say, a retail space, that would be a change of use of the property.
Okay.
And I don't, so it wouldn't be, we wouldn't have a food cart operating out of a retail space. It needs to be associated with a restaurant.
Even though we do with the mobile vendors, you can operate on a private property?
Right.
For private functions.
For private functions, not for public access. Thanks for the clarity, okay, do we want to bring this up as an agenda item to discuss further?
I would like to, yes.
Yeah, for clarity, yeah, because I mean, I mean...
I'm confused, and I've had not one, but two or three folks, popcorn, hot dogs, blah, 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 Cohogs and a Half Shell, it's been raised repeatedly, so I think something, it would be neat to have some variety and not just stamp it down, that's all.
No, no, clarity, clarity would be helpful to everyone, because I mean, I've spent a lot of time downtown. I remember years and years ago, there was one July 4th, I must have blown through bottles of water in my store. So the next year, I'm like, you know what, I'm going to sell it outside, and someone goes, you got to get permission from the Select Board to do that, so... And I did, and I did, in my own driveway, it was not a good hot year, and it was, I didn't sell a lot of water, but it was just, understanding the process helps everybody.
Yeah, and I think choices are good, and supporting entrepreneurship is good, you know, and a lot of people have good ideas, so I would tend to lean that way, but anyway.
We can put that on future agenda for, all right, so we have a motion, we have a second, any final thoughts, Mike?
I don't know if it's final or not, but I, and maybe I'm beating a dead horse on it, but as I look, as I look at the pictures and the emails regarding the, the trailer that's in the community, the town parking lot, it just appears to me there might be a way to be a little bit more economical in the spaces that we use, if they're going to be there, or somebody like them is going to be there. So I don't propose any changes to anything, and I support this, I think this has worked out well with a year's worth of testing, if you will, but it just looks to me like, particularly as I read the emails, that we could do a little better than the spaces that they're articulating here.
It was definitely challenging to hold spaces until a truck arrived, and it was challenging to, particularly on the weekends, when people would just move the cones, then there's no place for the truck to park on Saturday, so it's, trying to find something that works.
Yeah, okay, understood, 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 understood.
Yeah, or saw horses or something, I mean, you know.
We did go to saw horses at the end of the...
You did, yeah, yeah. Corey, I just have one quick follow-up. Anybody sign up for 137, anybody?
One of the vendors tried it, they were there for maybe two days and just felt it wasn't the right audience for their, what they were offering.
Okay, thanks.
No volume, there was very little volume, I think. Or steady volume, I should say. All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Not a final thought, but any additional thoughts at the moment? All those in favor, Select Board Member De Castro?
Aye.
Select Board Member Davis?
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens?
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell?
Aye.
Select Board Member Metter says aye. All right, final series of actions tonight are our committee appointments. Just to note, there are several individuals that are put together in the various committees. If anyone feels they want to remove names individually, I'm open to that, but if not, we can take them as groups. So with that being said, I'll start with entertaining motions from, starting with the Board of Health.
Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint Dr. Noble Hanson and Dr. Richard Edwards to the Board of Health until June 30th, 2026, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed.
Okay, do we want to go, item by item by item, or do we want to read the slate?
Read the slate.
I'm read the slate.
Okay, I move to appoint Carol Gordon and Edward Sheehan to the Board of Health as alternates until June 30th, 2024, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed. Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint Peter Gaines, no, you want to keep going here or not?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question about the Board of Health.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question about the Board of Health. I'm okay with the recommendation, but I just want to clarify, is Mr. Sheehan is currently a full member? Is he, he's, he's not?
No.
I thought he was, he's not an alternate?
No, the, he is currently an alternate. He had been a full member, but the board swapped he and Dr. Edwards.
Okay. That's fine. I'm okay with that. The only, I have no problem with doing the whole slate, but when we get to the historical commission...
I will pause at that one.
If we could take that aside.
Yes, I will absolutely accept that.
Okay. Want me to keep going? I move to appoint Peter Gaines to the Cemetery Commission until June 30th, 2026, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed. Move to appoint Karen Latin, Janet Williams, and Elise Gordon to the Conservation Commission until June 30th, 2026, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed.
And we'll go to the HBDC, and then we're going to take a pause.
Move to appoint Dan Silver, Sam Strebert, and Robert Burns to the Historic Business District Commission until June 30th, 2026, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed. Move to approve, appoint Steve DeBurr and Timothy Gilmore to the Historic Business District Commission as alternates until June 30th, 2024, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed.
All right, so we're going to take action on that slate.
Second.
Second. Okay. All those in favor? Select Board Member De Castro?
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens?
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell?
Aye.
Select Board Member Metter say aye. Historical Commission. Mr. De Castro?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to point out that, as I mentioned earlier, we have two full positions, regular positions, that are vacant with the departure of Jane Moffett and the passing of Dr. Smolinski, and so I'm going to move to appoint Don Aikman and Janet Tennyson, who is currently an alternate to the Historical Commission until June 30th, 2026, until sooner revoked or a successor is appointed. But I also move to appoint Sandy Porter to fill Dr. Smolinski's position, which will take it to June 30th, 2025, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed. She has agreed to fill that slot, at least for the time being, at the request of the Chair.
I'll second that.
All right, good. Motion and a second. All those in favor? Select Board Member De Castro?
Aye.
Select Board Member Davis?
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens?
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell?
Aye.
Select Board Member Metter says aye. All right. Planning Board and Zoning Board of Appeals, who wants to do the honor? Mike?
Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint Robert W. Dubus and Arthur Spru to the Planning Board until June 30, 2026, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed. I move to appoint Lee Hovey and Virginia Fenwick to the Zoning Board of Appeals as associate members until June 30, 2024, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed.
Do I hear a second?